Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat. And I would like to... Hi students. I'm Dr. Thank you. I guess I'll follow see if I can make some arrangements for my daughter's seat.
And we do not think that we can respect the any of the people who are there, just want to say that they're must remember this. Thank you very much. Clearly, there is an initiative out of this spot. I think that I understand that everyone should consider that they might be in the bottom of the pyramid. I mean, if they don't think that's hard, then they should sort of. But I'm saying the point is to don't care, don't give enough power on it. Now, everyone, when you have some time, don't worry. You know, thank you, thank you, Charles, for your time being conscious of that. I know you're reflecting in case. I would like to apologize to the German and the first representatives that we have. Um, this is about this time running one of these meetings, so. Mistakes. Well, we have Mr. Vasimis, Mr. Thekine, and Cheryl Curry. And here, representing the U.S., we're kind of a pleasure by our presentation and attendance at the 21st Naval Nation Council. I'm sure that I'm sure that you've been planning your time. Thank you very much. We're going to continue on to delegate others, so. I'll ask you, I don't know.
Hello, we all back there. That's it. I'm happy to my seat when that came in, 23rd Naval Nation Council. I'm classic down there. Oh, I'm glad you had me there. Uh, to the next thing. But not. Who are doing that? Actually, I mean, I'm very lucky. So first, it has started, very likely, the party, election justice. Other office of the president, the vice president, where it's chasing that office. Yeah, I think it's not other year. Uh. Yeah, I think. But we're very, 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 uh. We're only, yeah. It's very, um. That can never tell you that. When they share the copper, I don't want to show them. But I don't know which way. But so many, they got some bad. I don't know, she's. Well, there's those, uh, yeah, I didn't say. There's those, uh, yeah, I was. This year. Very, uh, I think. You know, I'm not like the guy, you know, it's. Uh, well, it is, but, uh, well. We're missing. So the national consciousness, the care, um. So what I'm getting is something. I think so. Um, I'm really, who's I was actually, I'm good. What's that, I feel, you know, I think that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you. So there is your second question.
Yeah, I think we should have a little bit of a I'm still a little bit of a but we are we are we are so we're going to share that which we will um and a lot of that is very very much just remember but I was saying the although although um we are trying to we are we are so many grants chapter by those friends and that's we're of course, I'm already giving them some of the other which I'm sure the others and other things far which is probably can only be taught as many that our the mission for chapters have always on with the we will something on which um even the we should receive so last thing is of course, I want to do this far which is we but we now I show how it's more than so now we're so and space we're for now I don't still courage to the part we know this far but show how we are yeah I think to recognize I'm too important I think that my life is first gentleman and that you understand um seeing during so we shall restore the if you can stand with the thing was we are we don't have done just to make the condition of the customer that they are agents of the although he's been called new manager the man which because about the we are some of the managers that are on six weeks of the to that which is father by she was so it's just by the accident by she was in the next gentleman who was also took you the man as my mom as well as so you know that what we are doing is our family and we have some of the issues of the services we need to assist us with the because we are um just as a person who and so we can then I should be sorry for that although I assume she is rather than to because that were I I entered my heart and that's my host or my best wishes to my generation so this afternoon I just want to share um good experiences I have a question for certain responsibility and so to the communities that I want to say that I am hardly able to that is such a mission I'll send our appreciation to the special guests that I recognized here this afternoon and also I would never think of this afternoon so that's our the show how I'm so we are very much just kind of way to wish that we are in their heart and also want to shake the memories of the US one who and I would have thought as a mother to be sure of a to exercise and you know child every time so chance so possibly operation or when we get that we try so because of the reaching search of childrens and they are students and obviously they are wanting to so the way I was set up in this um sort of situation which also I think I should communicate the sense of that we are there is about that really we think that we have the diversity that we are reaching out to and we tell me can I would face around[299.65]
We'll move on to delegate clock. You're recognized for five minutes.
Lieutenant Speaker, Mr. Slater. I don't know. I mean, and I'm ashamed. For the father, he by chains. I don't know. It's an issue. I don't know if you believe. I don't know. It's such a thing that I see, but like. She is trying to end far as it do men. I don't know. The issue be in the one hundred and the she go. What it to you, because we. But he may go. He go, you know, I mean, there's another. With our mother's son. I don't know. That's things. As she taught. I don't need me for my day. Today, you can not shut. He are the Chanel of his team. Paul Paul Senior, the Chanel of Son. I was then caught. She are. Of course, it could are Eva Schindlson. All of them. We just three goes on the end. And then he the her rockfish. I don't. Chama. Both the yeah, I think we take a lot of. The yeah, uh, just about. Paul Paul Junior. Zee Jack. Of course, it's my. I mean, you know. He go with J D. Now, for say, yeah, Chama. And so. So. The eh, I wrote it as a so. Of course, Charlotte, eh. And Johnny, eh, been nineteen the long. She's there. She she the. The landish. It's a washing dog, the landish. First of all, eh, we both. I each advice. But even if eh, as a group, which is killing this nation. So eh, I'm shit with you. I don't care. The she the for they. And he is what it's really. And when I should show this. Of course, she keep. I don't need a. I you see, but he must send. I don't know. She please a clever. Paula, the Linda, the Paul. Uh, that is the son, he are you. Or some entirely such a bad piece of. We need to. It could are ancient days, you can. I think it was similar. I don't want shit. The guys who wrong a lot. He is allowed, which leader. They should. That I I he eh, the landish. But it thinks I've been knowledge at the same. I don't know. Any man that eh, United States, I will be so. Eh, yeah, I wish. I don't shut not that eh, United States, very. Of course, it could are a man strong. But all of them. Because a lot of eh, the beginning, these are. But even if eh, can't change. I don't yet eh, the she the like. That's not so tiny. All of them, the Jolo, eh, the not. I don't call it. Oh, even on this. In ten. Of course, I mean, the repeating that. Sorry. So has created dreams. He is a hero. For. Which was, I think, I don't know. The net of eh, the son, eh, the father's and. Probably in that she she in our mission. This. I don't know. Then. Yeah, it's in the head. The she the like, come, chili chapter. Uh, chili in the night, so this day. The honest from chili chapter voters. Of course, even that you either. She not machine, she be. I don't know. Lots of it, eh, because. I would check that. Only game. From some sign, you know, it's sweet. About Jimmy, Jimmy. Uh, we need be going. I don't know. It's a. A shit that the she the like. Of course. We have a lot of this and I think. Because. Bill Nigro, so of course. Vice President, Sean Martin. I don't know. Crowned Chief Justice. For it could have any. And now, which would they give to a handsome? You know, it could have every side in that is saying. For the shaving. And it be nasty. They need family. And here.
We leave to know, Tom. You're recognized. For five minutes.
Thank you, President. Uh, within this lady. We can so much for the unity, the song to. We share. Uh, make time, I didn't share. Uh, what did he talk to the enemy last twenty? Twenty two, the eight, that's the two. Very important, that's the nine. Not to tell. He's a master. Of all, very, you know, she managed.
So it's simple. Can you try and speak into your mic and try and share it on?
Yeah.
Okay, of course. I'm going to be up after the talk, okay? Thank you. So we have answered. We're recognized for five minutes.
Yeah, I'll tell you how much whether I'm doing on site. Uh, especially any, uh, like, you know, armed, uh, class. I will, yeah. A certain she even congratulations twenty fifth generation also. Uh, it's called the general team. Uh, we're getting that we're the one that we're the team. Uh, definitely, uh, for a few years soon. That's it. I'm gonna make that. Uh, yeah, so, um, so that I'm not being, uh, choosing the wrong. Um, but that's all. So I'm excited to say that. Oh, you know, uh, you just know that this is the one. But I'm thinking it was really well, uh, it's kind of like, uh, he started to think of it. Uh, it's no, uh, can finish my son. And he knows that he's sometimes, uh, the last one that around. And the fact that I was born with, uh, our station. It's, uh, it's, uh, we didn't, uh, uh, we just do it a lot.
And that's. You know.
I know that guy was looking at my.
Yes, um, what did you say, mom?
I saw nearly, I saw almost fifty.
Uh, so, yes, no, but the screen said anyone under eighteen.
That was for the cough medicine.
Oh, yes, over.
And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies.
And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies.
And they had to do it a second time for the bottles. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies. And they had to do it a second time for the bodies.
The pastor was like, God, we're waiting. Yes, we've been waiting years to provide the time to be more effective. But we need to address a question either. Also, things under fire, under the end of the hour, is probably already worse session at one again. So I think this resolution is important. I don't actually agree with you, Mr. President. Like we see, not have, I think, so I'm also trying to.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very excited.
Sponsor. May I go back to, um, thank you, Debbie. And then I'll come to you later in the next year. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, delegates later. I know if you had, um, should be a delegate, uh, body for the question. And that was one of the, that was the. Initially, I did state that I don't know whether it needs to be correctional. Uh, the speaker is under two eighty-one, two national council, two eighty-one and two national council, two eighty-two. And following does provide information about the speaker is entitled to according to our national code. In terms of the speaker pro temp, that is not section, uh, to national code, section two eighty-seven, or there is a speaker pro temp. However, as you stated, in this case, there's not really a rule in terms of making up for selection of a speaker pro temp. To become an addition may be, um, the, um, speaker appointment at this point. Uh, but I, I think in terms of your question, my understanding, um, my first year speaker council was that, um, we did have some events that are often out of nation. Or speaker had to be involved. A really good, um, point to that is what will be happening tomorrow at the Arizona State Capitol in windy. Uh, there's always the expectation that speaker is going to be present during that time. The speaker does speak on the Capitol Council and also introduces our council delegates. I do recall for the first year, um, four years ago, um, Speaker Damon did accompany us to the state of New Mexico during that time while he was serving as speaker pro temp. Um, to represent the twenty-fourth national issue council. So after your question, I believe that seems, um, rules applied to this speaker pro temp would probably extend in this, in this situation. Um, I understand your concern is that we, um, we do need to continue with what is happening within our government and the issues that are currently presented to us. Especially those dealing with, um, electric. And I believe right now in G O A is certainly an issue as well, um, with the increase in our electric funds. So I, I would guess, and I am guessing, because I think our legislative council would be able to provide a legal guidance for that in that area. But, um, speaker pro, speaker and speaker pro temp work in the same capacity as we see with the twenty-fourth national issue council. And would probably be on travel in certain situations where they aren't traveling on behalf of the work that's done for the national people. Um, but I think at this point, Michelle, is there anything to me like that to them? Um, delegates later, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn the report over to legislative council to get a legal opinion on the question that has been provided by should be a delegate.
That's a pretty important comment here. That is, um, to pursue on pro temp and that is, I or any of the delegates can take what you said of counsel's advice. And I'll take. I or any of the delegates can take what you said, the counsel's advice, and ultimately, we're the ones who make the decision. So I think we overly rely on our statements by what we said, counsel before and accepted them. Um, since you're asking for it as a party presentation, I'm going to consult that as soon as. And I think what would be helpful is a clear explanation of what a specific question is that we're wanting to be on track on this. So would you like to restate your question, or would you like to restate the question?
I'll go ahead and have, I'll, I'll be restate the question, and I do apologize, colleagues. I need to make it clear, I am licensed as an attorney, and I'm currently not practicing. So I have to be very careful in that I have to rely on legal, um, counsel to provide the opinion. Otherwise, it starts to look like I'm providing the opinion, or just why I'm relying on our chief legislative council at this time. So that will get later, that will be my response to allowing, uh, to allowing Dana, our chief, uh, the, the chief legislative council for the twenty-fourth National Nation Council. To provide us some guidance at this time on the duties of a speaker pro temp. Thank you.
Okay. W. Cranny, you recognize the question to the chief legislative council?
Well, yeah, we do, um. Yeah, um, it's later, and we thought, hey, the council. Uh, it's here, so, um, my question is in terms of. Page three, uh, third. Line fourteen, which is seven, is, is, um. Everything is at the level of the speaker pro temp. Um, every speaker pro temp needs to follow, because of the money you need to. But who would be someone that you would, which one would you have?
You understand? Miss Bob, I'd like to recognize and respond to that guy's question.
Good afternoon, twenty-fifth National Nation Council, uh, this is Dana Barlow, Chief Legislative Council. Uh, with me, I also have the Office of Legislative Council, and it's, um, very nice to be here this afternoon. And so, uh. If the speaker pro temp was, uh, traveling, he didn't see, uh, he would be able to appoint. Another speaker pro temp. Uh, that comes from section two N C two eighty-seven. It's not completely clear, because as was pointed out a couple of times. Uh, we, there's nothing, uh, on point about this process right now. Uh, I would like to point out that, uh, section four, which is on page three. If you're looking at, uh, section four, uh, the line eleven. That starts to, uh, lay out what the council is authorizing this limited, uh, speaker pro temp. Uh, to do, so those duties and those duties start on, uh, line fourteen and on line, uh, twenty-seven. Uh, it is at the pleasure of the council, which is regular in the council, as which duties, uh, you're authorizing the. Uh, speaker pro temp to take. Uh, thank you, uh, and one question, uh, that I would like to, uh, one statement I'd like to make. Delegate, uh, Delegate Charles Newton pointed out that, uh, there is a citation error in this. Uh, legislation, it is on, uh, page three, uh, line ten, and it is, uh, statutory code, uh, section. And that is a technical error that the Office of Legislative Council, uh, will correct before the legislation is finalized. And thank you, back to you, speaker pro temp.
Can you say it's three or four?
Uh, sorry, it's three or four.
That's referring to regular speaker, not the first.
Right, uh.
Which is one in two, two and three.
Yeah. Uh, two or three, so. But we're going to, we're gonna, uh, two eighty-seven, uh, two eighty-seven.
Clear.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, two eighty-one and two eighty-two, that's refer to the speaker of the National Nation Council, so in that respect, it's correct. So if we were two eighty-seven, that's current approval. Colleagues, we recognize. Thank you, David, thank you.
We can, we look down. The second, and we look at that one, we have speaker below. So his labor, yeah. I don't know, my door. Yeah, he can check, uh, I should have been done. That's not that big, because we did that. Uh, here you can tell, uh, that's a little bit, it's a little bit long. But we go to our incident. So we are, you know. Correct, we, and we, I mean, I'm not. Making, and then, and then, and then. They've been, you know. H, we have four. Line seven. So, like six now. Six, that is, six, which is the word eight, the National Nation Council here, last list, the line four. I'm just so. Thank you, that, I make that, to insert, uh, delicate, so. Uh, so. So Asian could, uh, they, uh, this is the council, they can do with the language. Actually, just play with those models, you know, this, this, the name. For that, the, the, the speaker, who's in town.
You're motioning to insert, I'll be honest, doesn't need you on line seven, page three or four. Is there a second? Your second, you got it totally. I was informed that the Office of Legislative Council had drafted this amendment, and so. Please give me one moment to refer it, or confirm with them. Governor.
Yeah, it's up to me, sure, to remember, I mean, I, it's late, but I can, um, it's still more than, I don't know. Something was, a word, it's a bridge to, we're probably working on it, but I don't know, it's, it's, yeah. Oh, you mean, you know, like. And it came out of, uh, I think, I think. When it's later, uh, all the chair, you think that rules, or some. Are we, I mean, like, do you really, uh, catch it, is it a, or is it the main, do you think it's always rules?
Thank you very much, Bobby. This is a great area of the rules. The pro temp provisions that are referred to exist under subsection two eighty-seven. They refer to a pro temp when there are standing committees that exist. And so it says, in the absence of a speaker, then the. Committee member, the, the colleagues, the, the other delegates at the National Council second. Would select a chair of understanding committees to then serve as the pro temp. That's the only provision that covers the pro temp. And so that's why, at the beginning of the agenda, it shows the pro temp selection there. And the presumption is that we have to get together and speak in advance, designate that person. And so that is how the pro temp was then arrived at, because of the conversation that was referred to earlier. Um, additionally, the rules that were attached by the Office of Legislative Council in the legislation. Govern the selection of a permanent speaker. And so it is really the discretion of this council on whether they want to open up and use the nomination process. Or based off the conversation that we had earlier, and the almost consensus that was reached. As you move forward with a continuation of, uh, so, as the interim pro temp speaker for the next two weeks. And so that is the discussion in the matter that is before the council at this time. And like I said, the rules that are referred to in C J A zero three eleven, they refer to the permanent selection of the speaker. So that is the protocol by which the council will select a speaker on January twenty-third at the beginning of the winter council session. But the other rules that govern the pro temp selection process, which is under two eighty-seven, and is also not exactly referred to right now. So that is, uh, your answer to your point, what? W. Cranny, would you like to recognize?
Other, that makes later. Given your basic rule of decision on where the rule. Legislation can three or four, one, one. To run through the state, for the purpose of selecting its speaker. Pro temp, now of nation, for twenty years, now of nation, council, if you can, by. The box of rules, and the selection of the speaker that heard, and section three of C B O A, that. Where the three, last on every, another class, as they go to A.
Thank you, W. Cranny, and that's what I'm saying, is that any delegate made motion to amend the legislation. And so there is that conflict that exists right now, and that's why I'm saying it's the matter that is presented before the council. So through this debate, through the conversation, through this, there is an opportunity for the councils to make their determinations. On whether they would like to either amend the legislation, remove those selection, um, protocols. To move forward with the amendment that was offered by W. Daniels and by W. Toll. Or to actually go back and do a tender nomination process. So I think those are the three options forward, and none of them are necessarily. Wrong or right or inconsistent with each other, I guess, where, as you mentioned earlier, we do need your forms title two, to more clearly elucidate. Explain this protocol, you have this process.
There.
W. Teff, you recognize?
Um, I can, yeah, I look to, sorry, this later, um, this is on the. Now, you're correct, so this is for, yeah, yeah. I thought there's a staff reading, maybe, if, okay, this, you, go ahead, I mean, it's. And, I don't even engage in that. Uh, that's, it was, uh, you know, that was just, this is like, that was very, I don't know. You're, I don't know, it's, uh, we're looking at, we're, it was, uh, which that was asked to answer to. We, we never, simply, that is, this is, we're moving to find out, it's, it's, you're seeing, we, uh, because.
What?
But it is used to recognize.
So I'm going to be asking questions for clarification. As this is under chapter four, the better means of determining. And the. The rating that you reach the classes are proving a real problem of the younger classes. I find this, you know, the really. Of standards and that is of government function is we. Think and talk about it. So to see clarification, I mean, that's. Being expensive for all the presenting for this. President, in this. One time appointment, I mean, how. And the authorization to sign that signature on the presentation for expenditures. From a bar to whatever the maximum threshold is, a just such a time that a speaker was selected. It's a quality which is requiring. The speaker has a resume. Three forty six.
Return your time at three forty six. Don't get Jesus. When we go to tell you, it was next in the lineup and then return to the sponsor, don't you show some. Tell you how you're impressed.
I think. The next question. This call is for the part of the. My needs for your prayer, this is not a motion, but that's big. This is my expectation without any remnants. As where the six lines of your hotel, my priorities have been made. I should trust the modifier number if it will affect a order or that has to be put together. These procedures are not specified to make a American television to insert the largest name. These procedures, the everything that I'm looking for. They're ready to nominate. They're ready to. And so that's what this is. This is the. And when some grace to the concept, and how to understand. And the result is how it is. The. The. And then unless the number that we've been removed out of. And the exhibit provides an opportunity for the nomination. It provides opportunities for individuals to be able to say whether they want you. Whether they want you to serve everyone here. The results that it requires. The member of the nation should show them and reach it. Except for confirmation. He's not moved, except for the judge. You can only have over and fewer programs that direction fifteen minutes favorite on Thursday. The speaker. And I suspect ultimately our. Of this council is moving further. Because it's not. A law that rewards maybe in some areas. But this legislation is clear. And following the path, the path of the. And allowing this motion a second to move forward. Does not prevent shades of the. And I think this kind of us, it's the privilege, there are some of my actions. Seeing that a good deal of the meetings. And all of the watching, there will be put any. How this time to a good nominee of her. Who is going to represent others. And first, how lose to represent our best. That's true. The country also has some other words. And so. And so now I want you. Those were the last question, whether we have. And there is really a big time for the position council, or that is, I want to be alone. In fifty eight.
Would you like to be the sponsor of the amendment and the sponsor of the legislation? But. Can you turn off?
I apologize that you're already. So what was the question was two of those. It's now the most relevant, the most remembered, so things are wrong with me. So the rest of the number, there's a man in. Is in conflict with the exhibit. Is that a lot of the people. Who take three or four. And then this is the girls and healthy to be just. But that was.
Which was the second point and wasn't clear that was back to the spot. I'm going to move to tell you, Ricky Ness, and then go to tell James, W N S, you recognize?
Thank you very much. I'm glad the folks in this special section of the. I think that the twenty best possible. Okay. I'm sure. I'm sure you're very well. And then we should sort of on the panels. But again, question from my. Remember, there was a. Um. On the. We were sure that we know. When's the. We are. Can you just. That's our thing is not fair. We will rest for this. On this and that. As well, because of the. On the end, that is the only that rest. And we're currently. Just real. And we. Uh, you said some. We can do that as well. It was a little now pushing the large verse. We want to say, uh, we don't have this, but it's time for the nomination council. And we have to be. On the. Basically, as well. It was. I want, you know, it's very, we're thinking in my own time, she's placed that. If we look. Uh, I have it. I don't know. Do you know? I would like to. Not mine. The other amendment, as well as my. For the. Whatever. And I'm. I'm going to.
Three sixty. No, please.
There were.
Um, because. As long as everybody go.
You recognize? You mentioned that. I'm gonna see. That I was. Well, yeah. Or. I think they want to. The. The. Very. We have. The. I'm going to. Very loud. So then we. I was going to write the. I'm.
So we've been used as on his motive at this time. There are no colleagues who have requested to speak. There are no motions for. So I told you, Simpson. But Simpson, you recognize?
Uh, did you? To speak. Yes. Yeah. When is the word of the speaker? So. At the beginning. But again, it goes back to. Well, it's. Um. It's very. For. And you. Obviously. Second. I think it's part of. That. You're. If you get. Well, the speaker, sometimes it's interesting, always some. First, I would point the order around to the agents. He just. Okay, so can you please hold on one moment?
Okay, I apologize for the direction of a point of order. Uh, chaired, uh, adult project speaker. Should not, we don't, um, talk today, yeah. Uh, with the amendment. As the main motion, main, main motion individual. I'll be a case as they need not, I believe. Um, honorable, I hope. I got. I get kids instead of. I don't manage to. To honorable Dan. Or, uh, even the point of order being. So we can get back in order and ask honorable Thompson to see if he stands with his second or stands with the way to. I have all down Daniels.
I apologize, Tony Simpson. Tony James is correct. I should have asked her to use my job second. It would have been kind of like a sponsor of the. Then it's all. She was trying to second. I stand with my emotion as second, so. Thank you. As I expressed earlier, he will become the motion party and the chair. I'm going to say this, you can. For entertaining a second or he's seen amendment that delegates. Is there a second? Second, you want twice? Second, doing three times? There's no second to that amendment at this time. Now, Doug Simpson, because I recognize you in air, I'm going to restore your five minutes. Because. We're back on the main motion. That's where it should have been first place. But just as a matter of protocol, that's what we should do. So the other five minutes, if you recognize to speak, Derek Simpson, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker, the council, again, I'm not, yes. We got it. So. Was a great. And I'm certainly that. Was basically. Uh, we can't be that we speak, so we're this up. But I could. We do. Now, I don't. People doing the time. Then I'd like to. How to. This story will be that now. It was. And it was. The. When the first one was. So I think that this going to be was correct. And I do expect that. The Congress, the council that are going to Congress. Uh, that the chairman of this and the chairman of the Congress, I agree. And I think that, you know, we continue to talk and we just have a. And, uh, the Congress can do this. When I guess, well, as a very simple example. And to me, I think that we. Uh, what it is in a straight, just to put it coffee, but the non-legal process will come. Where we need that sort of. Us that we get our. And we will time.
We consider.
But I, since you're opening, you know, emotions for emotions.
Yes, I'm. Speaker in the. And.
Their time is reserved, uh.
Three twenty seven.
Colleagues. Mister Simpson. But I guess. I would like to know. Numbers. And we will. So I. Uh, I mean, I'm there. And I was. Odds. Because section three is referenced and all the audience read some of it. I think it's fair when you're, uh, we can read it into the record. So I'm making that at this.
Want to order?
Oh. There is. Both of the sponsors.
Um, again, not a change, potent speaker. Let that should not honor Simpson. Hey, uh, not people, it's not. But I want to say, yeah, it is not a. Open up a nomination, D B. Although he did another second. Motion. Nominate, uh, another honorable honor. So. There was no. Um, fault for the second on the first motion with was to open up the nomination. And that's my point of order today.
Thank you. The, the, the reason I was then going second, really before I actually recognized that was so that everybody. Including the audience here in the chamber would hear what the protocol is, that we stated for the record. And then from there, I would look forward on a second to open nominations. But I was using my discretion as chair to provide a little bit more exposition into this. Because not everyone has the way to say. So colleagues, I want to be clear on what we're referring to here. And that's, so I'll just say from the first to second, really was visiting today. And because we're going to follow this process, I'm going to be one forcing it on pointer reader. That is, if there's a second, and we've already seen that there's potentially a second. Section three, we listen to select the speaker. For the twenty second nomination council, the nomination council hereby adopts. Run to cancel the nomination. That would advise to select this speaker. Or to its own process. Through the speaker shall be selected as the first order of business of interception of the nomination council member twenty eleven. The speaker shall be selected and confirmed by the nomination council as the first item of business at the council set in schedule for the fourth Monday. In January, of any odd members here, two N C sub second, two thirty two C. Three, lead the powers and duties of the speaker as written in two N C second, twenty five, into the record. Four, any delegate may nominate another delegate to serve as speaker with no second required. Current speaker is nominated and accepts the nomination. He starts with. So point a speaker per attempt, pursuant to the win C twenty five, eighty three. And then five, the number of nominations shall be limited, except upon motion second, the majority vote on forcing the nomination process. Six, each nominee shall accept for the exact nomination, finally nominated. Seven, each nominee in order of his or her draw shall be allowed to make a fifteen minute statement. On his or her platform, your speaker. Eight, each nominee in order of his or her draw shall be allowed to make a fifteen minute statement on his or her platform, your speaker. Nine, questions shall not be allowed. Ten, upon presentations by nominees, each member of the nomination council present for president shall pass one vote for a candidate by secret ballot. The nomination election administration shall assist in the balloting. Eleven, in the event of a modern two nominees, there shall be a run up election that bring the two candidates receiving the most votes. At which time, the final two candidates will give out a five minute statement for their final vote with no questions or comments. The runoff for cheaper surgery will not apply in the event candidates and this. That's how I see it. Shall not apply in that candidate's and is hereby declared winner. Twelve, in the event of a tie vote, selection shall be by random plot. Thirteen, the council shall, by resolution, confirm this speaker. Soon to section three. Item four, under that section, says any delegate may nominate another delegate to serve as speaker with no second required. There is no requirement in this protocol for a second for what the nominations were for making nominations. So, W James. That is a clarification point, but under the rules that are being proposed for usage at this time. There isn't requirement for opening nominations. So decisions that rest at the council on whether we'd like to continue with this protocol. Or if you're going to remove it from the legislative, then we continue as otherwise was suggested. There are. But really, it's. So thank you for one, uh, clarification. Ellen Simpson, I'm going to recognize you will be. One. Staff, can you please? Oh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. We must. Like counsel for this. So. What is. You know, the nomination. And I was.
I see a second. As a not nominations. Now, traditionally, when there's a voting, you open up the nominations, then. Can you make? Yeah, but we'll just. Colleagues. Um. Mister. Be one moment. So here's what we're going to do. We're not going to vote immediately on a vote and as that would happen if you have. When you open up before the nominations, any of our colleagues here are allowed to nominate. Any other colleague for the position of interim or test speaker. So that is what the nominations for our court at this time, recognizing the motion from Douglas Simpson and the second from delegate Ricky Ness. So you're told. You're the first recognized.
Thank you. Looking at the speaker. For. She'll be good. Only that. So. I'm. Also. For less to. As the. Speaker.
What?
We're not.
That we're looking as you recognize.
There is. A little. Buttons to be. Part of the. Now, we. Rest now. It's. Uh, the progression process. Pass my question. That we must, and then what's happened for him? That was the process.
Speaker David, are you, are you motioning for something? Or say, tell her, David? No, okay. Three years of training. At this time, there's been one nomination. The floor is open for nominations or closed nomination pursuant to the most decided. But we're going to, so I thought I saw and get a thumbs up. I think it's.
So. So.
Okay, the chair recognizes that, so it's settled here, thumbs up. And then you recognize the Simonson, David Simonson and David James, I think it was. As well. Okay. So it sounds similar.
Yes, I like to. Mission. As a.
It's the second. There's a second in terms of. Guys. We're going to vote on closing nominations. There's no protocol for debate, otherwise, continuing with this, there hasn't been any other motions. So at this time. The interim speaker will recognize a vote to close nominations with a motion by Senator Simonson and the second by Senator Davis. Staff, can you please receive the vote?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. All colleagues have voted. The vote is twenty one days, two days, interim speaker. And seven, under section three, says each nominee in order of his or her draw will be allowed to make a fifteen minute statement on his or her platform, your speaker. Also does not clarify whether. The council can require that of the nominee or whether they can turn it down. I'm going to ask, tell you so at this time, if he would like to make a statement of two fifteen minutes. We let him tell us, so it's waiting on making the statement. Colleagues. We have complied with second three, which is referenced in the legislation. Don't you still has been nominated? And. And number eleven, they identify some protocol, but when it's something of them for the call, if there's a new one on the. We now, what's the council and what it will use. The next. We now, what's the council, and what it will use, it will be the next step. We don't vote on an addition, doesn't mean cause, but isn't the protocol that's a benefit now, where this interim process on when there's a new one on page. And so, the under, the word is if there's consensus to move forward on a simple amendment, that would insert Delegate So's name. If there is not consensus, then we will move forward with the vote with the assistance of the election administration. It does the fairest things.
The chance of history of one nominee for a speaker. If you could, about if I got a speaker that was done in January of, um, twenty twenty one.
Where, where is that, we're pressing, I think.
I need my book, I need my book, it has, yeah.
I'm saying point one, this is a mention.
They opened.
There was a yeah. Thank you very much, Tony. That's what this is asking, is it, why is it moving the vote and how is it moving the vote? What happened in January twenty twenty one was a vote on a select from the speaker, not on the interim speaker. And so this has sort of been a higher process, and I'm trying to respect the wishes of the council, as they've been elicited earlier into this process. And so that, that was determination like that, I asked for consensus, there's one consensus. So colleagues, you have to leave us in time to consult with the election administrations. It's bringing one again on the ballot, because there was one nominee that was nominated by council for the elections were closed down. So, we're gonna recess for five minutes, and then please come back, we'll discuss how we're gonna move forward with the production costs. Thank you. Five minutes from now, it is five pro eight. The ballots are almost identical that you complete the lines for the person that you were voting for. That is an incredible vote for that person. They're going to put the box in which you will place yay. They are going to put my request based on my prior experience, is that even if you are not voting for any of the candidates that in places that are allocated so that we do not have any missing or misplaced ballots. So I'm not, staff, now, have they distributed the ballots? Now, please distribute the ballots. Those should be the ballots on the risk of council. Allies, please do not turn in any Dallas card that's neither so tell the team, I want us, I just want us to make this a little last time. At least one of us for dollars, I'm gonna give us two minutes to run, just like we have in regular circumstances. And I wanna make sure that everybody has an answer, and we'll just have to explain some others. The choice, are you willing to give me the time? Do you have, are these on the board? Yes, it's ready. Okay. Colleagues, we're gonna start our achievements now, you have opportunities to provide your ballot into the boss. Thank you, this is your opportunity to vote, please place your ballot, please the boss, whether or not you are voting. David? I suppose. Election administration staff?
Yes.
Can you give me one?
Have your ballots, so I don't want this on the you know, it's stacked between, you know, what they're
First, can I borrow your mark for a quick? I'm gonna turn my end of a different.
Okay.
So have one more, colleagues, for not to I'm great, all. Said you only got one. On to the time to submit the ballots as last, we have an opportunity now to the election administration to make a tabulation on the procedure. These remain here, I'm mistaken, it's a question.
We have twenty four votes from the student that thought they'll get so. Yes.
That makes it pretty simple.
Yes.
What's up? I'm gonna announce the thing, tabulated, maybe you turn that part of the phone on a bit. Thank you, colleagues, election administration has completed the tabulation of the votes.
Yes.
And they have an announcement on the final results. Election administration, who's designated the speaker, to speak in front of the better microphone.
Honorable delegates, this is the King Nelson, I will announce election administrations, uh, twenty five votes that were counted, there were twenty five hour votes for delegates, so thank you.
To now the election administration, thank you for your assistance in the process. I'm gonna ask that you take the council forever and permit being sponsored by certain to return to the presentation. I would ask you, can you answer one, to prepare into all this, the greatest of proceedings that are still needs to be an amendment to the legislation to ensure that delegates serve to me. We then have to complete voting on whether that amendment, any motion, that's the decision. After that, it's maybe with an island, hand over the ballot, and I'll be there. Say, interim speaker, oh, my, to, out of the set. It's enough. Staff, has the member who's really, colleagues, are gonna be just later on the series. If the interim foretelling will entertain a motion to amend the legislation. Which, uh, the speaker, I think, as those, that he knows, by the motion. And he started with a second from that within. From, yeah, it's out of the speaker there. The, uh, the, uh I'm walking back to a one order, um we went into recess, can, because we got a vote, we're coming back in possession. First, I define.
Well, Danny, well, you just, you do it.
Thank you very much, Senator David, um, can you provide a citation requiring a vote to exit recess? Certainly, every time you go and read this, we come back in, really do go off. Thank you, I remember at the end of the twenty fourth, there was a moment where then speaker so did not have us returning with a roll call vote. Um, we're voting on legislation, so I've seen this for one of both ways, there isn't a requirement. Now, but our group is, we can do a simply, as you were, you best yes to indicate that you're present, you best know, or zero when you're not present. So we do an attendance vote. Please use your controls. Staff, have you opened it up? Thank you. All this, all this is, if you pass the person. Yeah, and there's no requirement, this, the passive and it's been observed by some speakers, I mean. Also not observed, traditionally this one, this next end of this. And we're going to make the reading that is as opposed to the character of people calling. But we are, uh, here, we have a listening, I have the, the, the towers. And as I say, early, the ancient speaker, first annual, anything, but then. The chair recognizes the motion, um, Doug, if he has, and the second, Doug Damon, staff, can you please read that into the rare? Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Speaker Proton, it's my good knowledge, counsel, the other one is based three lines, seven, four. Words as Speaker Proton, insert the language, and just throw out of soap into the language. In, there's a scene about sections, and exits, as this inappropriate, the office of services, the office of council, everybody else. To make it as to this action, and this existence, and implement the council to take, some others, see, supporting any other than this message, speaking. Thank you, in a motion, and second. This is the amendment, so. Say that it can be debated or discussed. Division of the reason. Turn twice. Three times, staff, can you proceed into a row, number one? I apologize. That is, since, where's his timeline, that would probably, you're ready for this.
Thank you, so honest. As we move forward, um. If you come up in that, are we moving, 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 one base off the track? And, um, I appreciate, uh, the, many parties in the working. But I want to keep, keep, just for us, and there's having the, um, the prime administration, some of my colleagues. Uh, to make sure that laws, policies, the grievances, are being covered, we, we can be, uh, as one. But as we heard when, in the last two hours, there's still continues to be gray areas in our laws. Uh, there still needs to be, looking for, like, um. Pretty good, because, uh. For now, the nation, and of course, the shareholders, who are in his third, um, as delegates, and then through their, uh, shareholder, uh, the news. It's a, it's a, um. The issue, uh, regarding the, the lobbying conference, or group, is, or, or, uh. Um, raw, people, delegates, for either projects, that are potential projects in the future. Uh, the first one, which then, those are, um, so, the, we have asked. For an audit. In September of twenty. Twenty one. And the audit is supposed to be there, so that we can sure, uh. The individual that serves up, and has a control, and their capacity to, are doing the best they can, for the. Our laws, are, it shouldn't, the bottom of the budget. This part of the night, so is, is, we have challenges with the influence of our players. We have influences, in our, the people, the delegates, the seats. And the expectation is, in this amendment. And this, uh. Is that Speaker Proton, the pro campus council, and to agree. When you're working on, uh, we enter to read. And that should be, very straightforward. That no delegations or witnesses shall be meeting with the office of the speaker, and off, and speaker from town. Without, can recognize the people. While, issues and limitations, be adhered to, as the speaker from town, it's never. And from our district, very, very, most functional. That's. Sponsored medicine room, that was not in the best interest of the community. The speaker, as a, as, actually, the elements, will do that, and speak, will speak, for the delegates, of the community, of that, and that's. And that's the narrative, right? And we may represent us for a few days. The last part, we're going to be, this is, I think, next seventy, or something, it's related to. Speaker, what, what we do, reflects upon us. And we suffer them. We will make them. We will give you. And so we have to stay strong, you know, in our containment, and we have to make sure that the speaker, whether it's pro town. Whether the practices that we take, and if it's a public area, that it was built. So, I think we need to change it, and right now, with this sort of service form. You, as a, as a, they start changing their laws, particularly, which are not. And they did that already, with, with, with the data rights. We're gonna continue to do that because, for so long, responsible, as we have reached, towards people. And everyone in China, quite, certainly, and I'm definitely doubt it, was, there's one pressure, to say, you speak for that. And you have to, you don't need the best. But that's where the station has us. Because they're suffering on the highway. The children, they don't get that school. They're keeping there, so that we could live in a decent home. So that the seniors and there's, we're picking that up, and we look at our present, and that's what we want to hear. Having seen that for a long time. And so whether, who was the speaker, speaker for ten, or these delegates, we could continue to work. Yeah.
Doug, resume your remarks.
Thank you, Proton, speakers, ladies, I, those are questions, only of the person, can you? And then all those pros, and we're going to parallel, concerning that, delegate, we have, um. In terms of, like, how clearly, or, or, we have the internal control mechanism, for the legislative branch. And it's, I, again, the signature authorization, of, um, for this, she, I've been good. And with this protein speaker, I mean, I'm writing clarification, that if there are reasons, we can bring them place. Um, for, the speaker, uh, to be so, uh, pro ten, speaker, so, and it's, so. We have this international, and, uh, was going to be, I mean, this, that, which, which, that are, that are, which is, we sign on, and, you know, so, we spend, to go, for at least, I've been twenty, there are twenty other, I can have.
Doug, resume, are you asking that to the sponsor, Miss?
We are the sponsor, indeed, I'm, I was, we sponsor the legislation, so, to the sponsors of that.
Thank you. I just wanna be, uh, Doug, Charles, and me, and, uh, if you answer that, and that's, there's no one else, then you do it, then.
Thank you, and just the clarification, as the question, close, remember, one, which is by reading, who's your?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, so there's.
All this. Doug, resume. Are you requesting this under the one? You can be a non-servant, yes. Okay. So, I was the sponsor in the one, let's tell you who he is. Thank you, I'm Lord Proton, speakers, later, I don't know, I believe it was, I haven't, wait, if, help me get your question, I'm gonna choose, okay?
And that, I mean, um, so, Doug, I mean, yes, the question that I think this, was to extend your. To begin with, that, I mean, this, we, you know, when doing, it's, it's, there's a signature authorization, and a signature, signature authorization, um. That is gently signed about, you know, that's a part of it, relative vision, just saying that, this, I remember, was often, that's very, this was to make, which, sign, expenses. So, it's, in, with this pro tent, and according to, and just that, where being, with the rest, and now, if you're, this, we're doing, this, which, we like. And this, the, 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 so. It's, uh, which, you're, and, 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 as long as, to be, guys, very, very, we, this, this, she has style.
No, Doug, you have to, you have to, there's no one else, thank you, Proton. I just, speaker, Shalala, Slater, I'm actually, David, I'm, I'm just kidding, um, honorable, a studio. I'm trying to eat, I, I really enjoy the energy, the advice of energy. With the, uh, on that, that's pretty good. I, it was, um, confirmed, at a time now, by our new delegates, and questions, and concerns, that are constantly, as far as transparency, concerns, well. Could, uh, on a speaker. We're, 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 we're timing off, on, uh, the problems, for the next couple of weeks. What we're doing, they, they, what we're doing, what we're signing off on, by the problems for the next couple of weeks. And, the speaker, this man is the partner, the best, I just thought it was, uh, yeah, the director, making manual, you know. And I believe that Mr. Isaac, I keep this up, I don't know how long she's going to be in office. They're going to try some people to provide, to use for, and to air, and especially, that's what I'm saying, completely. To request for you, for standards, for others, for next speaker. I didn't take a lot of things, I mean, this all, from the way that he's done, now, or the chicken, or the, or the show. I think it's a very, that's, she did, uh, on the master show, it turned, I don't know, she, I don't know.
Thank you, colleagues, there is currently no one else in the queue, I just. No choice. Going three times, staff. You second, yeah. Well, in turn, Mark. Thank you. We will follow on the boat, and we'll be going. Thank you, we're over twenty days, three days, and the interim speaker now, and then everyone passes. We'll return to the main motion.
Two thirty-six.
And then anyone else?
Um, Harry, there was three thirty-six. And then Danny Simpson at three twenty-two.
But no doubt, yes, wishing to speak, when they go down the line, the lineup is, Doug, you're adding the two minutes and thirty-six seconds. Doug, you're getting most of the few minutes and thirty-six seconds, and Doug, it's system with three minutes and twenty-two seconds. Doug, are you recognized?
Oh, yeah, thank you, she has one guess later, and the delegates here in lobby, and here, and it was being online. What's clear is, there's always room, when we have opportunity for improvement, there's room to modernize our process. And there's room here to also, to be able to reimagine, um, that you were the pro-chef speaker, where the officer speaker presents. And he went through the council, my years of experience, and, um. He was working as an application counsel, taxi analyst, working with an application delegate. And there's been a clear way to call this council, these officers, you could call them all. There are many things of a real, good effect. There are many things that are real, you know, the process, but we have to rely on our staff, and our consultants, to provide information. We must talk about, how to respect our whistle for their laws. We must talk about, how we can increase, white collar crime, and in office of a prosecutor, to prosecute. Because, not only do we move, and hoping for the Senate. But they can decide whether to kill or kill me. But we give a run, we go where. And I find it good, it's good that. People don't put you in jail. And that's really the standard. And so, but I should, we should, we are. But it's the trust of our people. If we want to stop what we stand for. And that's why we have to go with these two demands. And they're going to use this council. We still have, we're giving them enough water. The truth is, what's there? At least, and the only thing that's here, so, I think, I think, because we can't just be one. Can't be just a choose out of this, it has to be twelve of us, and take this, and so we're going to monitor system. And every dollar that's used on behalf of the people, we are going to know, just like the ownership of it. And the people should know, because you were putting out what we're doing, and that's the, the thought we need to set them. It was probably compared with the two months of that.
Right, Danny, you have three minutes and thirty-six seconds.
I can't wait to go down, go to the end, speak, I can.